Good.
Hold it down.
There you go.
The international test sign, there's the mic on, you gotta tap it right. Good morning, everybody. It is nine o'clock. I call to order this regularly scheduled meeting of the Burnett County Commissioners' Court here at 9:00 a.m. on December 10th, 2024, in the second floor courtroom on the square in Burnett. And in calling to order, we have all members of the court present, and I'd ask our own very own, Mr. Herb Darling, if he'd lead us in invocation.
Lords, we ask your blessings upon this day and for your guidance. We also ask that we recognize the blessings you have given us in our lives. We ask for your help and your protection among our military and our first responders out there working to keep us safe every day. We would ask if you can to please send us a little rain. We're a bit parched. In your son's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Okay.
This thing ringing back just ten.
I'll fix it as we go.
Does this volume here?
Don't mess, yeah.
Don't touch that.
Sorry. I'll try to fix it over there.
All right. We have, we are, public comments? Are any members of the public? Oh, we do have somebody.
Yes, sir. Good morning.
Good morning.
Claire Nybro, Burnett County taxpayer voter and interested person. My comments will focus on agenda item number 10 from the November 12th Commissioners' Court meeting regarding the county's compliance process with Senate Bill 1893, better known as the TikTok ban bill. That bill became law on September 1st, 2023. All governmental entities had a compliance deadline of November 20th, 2024. During court on November 12th, we learned that Judge Oakley, the county's chief budget officer, did not allocate any funds in the 2025 budget to comply with this known event. He called it an unexpected hit to the budget and an unfunded mandate. The IT director was left to scramble at the last minute for new products that must also be CEGIS compliant. She said that the jail could not operate, cannot operate without CEGIS compliance. The absence of funding for CEGIS compliant products could seriously affect the county's operations and compliance with the law. How is the TikTok ban bill an unexpected hit to the budget since it became law on September 1st, 2023, more than a year before the November 20th, 2024 compliance deadline? Last week, I learned that the employee appreciation fund in the 2025 HR budget is $25,000. Since October 2017, the county has spent $99,120.84 of our taxpayer money on employee appreciation. How is it possible that Judge Oakley found $25,000 in the current budget for party venues, catered lunches and dinners, DJ entertainment, door prizes, and all sorts of other employee appreciation, but neglected to allocate $20,000 for IT products that are essential to comply with the law that became effective over a year ago? The failure to allocate funds for legislative compliance raises serious questions about the county's budget management and priorities. Since the IT administrative director position reports to Judge Oakley, was there a departmental meeting in open court to discuss the budget for the upcoming year? Open communication and transparency are crucial in budget matters, and the community expects them from its officials. Also, the excessive use of public funds for a private purpose under the guise of employee appreciation needs to stop. Thank you very much.
All right. Is there any other else on public comment? Okay.
Charlie Parker. I object to the fact that the five of you have so irresponsibly borrowed and frivolously spent the taxpayers' money over the last eight years. I object to the fact that Burnett County is over $30 million in debt. I object to the fact that Burnett County now spends $9.6 million more than the county takes in in revenue. I object to the fact that unless, less than three months ago, you voted to borrow $5 million on a short-term bond with $1 million of that money to be spent on new electronic election rigging equipment with backdoors built into the system. I object to the fact that you have allowed over $99,000 to be spent on employee appreciation luncheons, dinners, big parties with prizes and entertainment over the last seven years with an average of over $13,000 spent per year. I object to the fact that in 2023, you spent $38,000 with an outside consulting firm for a wage survey so that you could justify the large pay increases that you voted in for yourselves in 2024. I object to the fact that in September 2023, after Mr. Oakley returned from his state judicial ethics board suspension, the commissioner decided to pay him for his six months of lost salary, not only paying Mr. Oakley for the time that he did nothing for the taxpayers of Burnett County, but in effect paying him for his bad behavior that created his suspension. I object to the fact that the commissioners had an order drawn up to pay Mr. Oakley over $132,000 in legal fees for his bad behavior. I object to the fact that in September of 2023, the court decided to pay $21,200 to Baker Tilly for a forensic audit that turned into an investigation that turned into a report that turned into a very expensive, small stack of paper. All of the documented information listed above displays a clear lack of concern and lack of responsibility by the Commissioners' Court in how they handled the taxpayers' money. These five individuals certainly have proven that they are incapable of behaving as fiscally responsible adults and cannot be trusted with the taxpayers' money. I don't know how any of you can look at yourselves in the mirror or go to sleep at night. Mr. Oakley, you are an embarrassment to the people of Burnett County, and you should resign immediately. The lies, corruption, and cover-ups are all out in the open for all to see. This will not work out well for any of you.
All right. Is there anybody else from the public that'd like to make comment? All right. I have a request to go to item 15. This would be, is this working? This would be the presentation from the groundwater study results for Burnett County performed by Intera presented by Dr. Neil Deeds. Good morning, sir.
Good morning.
I've got, did you bring some water?
I did not. Sorry.
I've got copies, if anybody wants, of the slides. He's gonna go over some slides, so.
Yeah, I don't know if y'all have a.
Good morning.
Good morning. So should I launch right in here?
Please.
All right. So.
Which one's first, sorry?
The groundwater availability study for Burnett County is gonna be the first one. As you'll learn later, that really served as a basis for the next study, and we'll talk a little bit more about that. But what I wanted to do this morning is just briefly give you a summary of the work that was done as part of this groundwater availability study.
Can I interrupt you just for a second, just for a little bit of background on this?
You bet.
We commissioned the study, Herb. You were involved with it, I believe. And the intent of this was to look, to supplement what our Burnett County groundwater district looks at, to look more at the aquifers than just our borders. Is that a fair assessment?
Yeah, it's basically to do kind of a comprehensive look at the county. It's been about 10 years since a similar study had been done, and the district had gathered a lot of additional data, and we had a lot of additional data from all the developments that had been happening in the county. So each time one of those developments goes in, they have to drill and test wells. So what we were trying to do is take all of that new data in the last five to 10 years and integrate it into a countywide study that could then form the basis for additional science going forward.
Okay, thank you.
You bet. Okay, so again, just briefly, first, actually page two, wanted to go over the objectives of the study, and again, just to perform an updated study of the groundwater resources of Burnett County. Obviously, groundwater is really important to the citizens of Burnett County. That included looking at aquifer elevations and thicknesses, the properties of the aquifer, which are key to well yields, the water levels and available drawdown, the water quality, which is important, and then recharge and discharge. So how much water is coming into the aquifer and how much, how much water is leaving the aquifer? And if you can see that map on the right-hand side, it's basically color symbology of the aquifers where the wells are completed in the county. So this database is from the groundwater district, and all of the green wells are completed in the Trinity Aquifer. So you can see in precinct two, the majority of the aquifer and wells is going to be the Trinity Aquifer. As you go to the west, precinct one, what you see more is what we call the Lano Uplift Aquifer System. And you've probably heard of the aquifers that are in that system, so the Marble Falls, Ellenberger is one of the biggest resources in the county for an aquifer, the Hickory, and then the granite and granite gravel. And so it's interesting how it divides kind of across 281, as you see predominantly the Lano Uplift System on the west and predominantly the Trinity to the east. The bulk of the new developments have gone into the Trinity, and so that's where a lot of the new data was. Okay, next page is page number three, just talking about aquifer elevations and thicknesses. And what you see here is what's called a cross section, and so we're showing what the elevations of the aquifers are going from west, which we call up dip, which is where the aquifers are actually at ground surface, right at your feet, to down dip to the east where the aquifers get deeper and deeper as you move from west to east. So the further east you go in the Trinity, the deeper you have to drill your well in order to reach the Trinity Aquifer. And so what the study helped define is what the elevations of those aquifers are. So for instance, how deep would you have to drill that well if you're in a particular part of the county? And the reason the depth is important will be clear when we talk about the next study because available drawdown is dependent on water level and depth. And so what we did is just better define the depths to those surfaces throughout the county. Okay, page number four. So talk a little bit about water levels. What we see in the two maps on the left are the monitoring network from the Central Texas GCD. The left-hand one shows the Lano Uplift Aquifer monitor well locations, and again, these are gonna be mostly to the west, west of 281. And then the Trinity well locations are shown on the map that's on the right-hand side there, and they're gonna be mostly to the east. I gave an example of two, what we call hydrographs, which just shows the water levels through time. And there's two curves on those plots. The blue curve is the water level that's being measured in the well, and then that dotted red line is the Palmer Hydrologic Drought Index, which is just a measure of how wet or dry it is. So as the red line goes up, it's wetter; as the red line goes down, it's drier. And what you see is that water levels basically follow that drought index. And so you get a lot of variation in water levels with how much rain we have, and you know, that would make sense, right? I mean, water levels go up and down. Now, as you get deeper in the aquifer, the water levels are gonna react less to rain. So the further east you go, the less vulnerable you're gonna be to drought over the long term. But for all the shallower wells, a few hundred feet, and most of the wells that are in the Lano Uplift System, they're all going to be very vulnerable to how much rain we're getting. The other interesting thing, and it's a little bit subtle, is that you can see in 2011 on that upper graph, the dotted line or the dashed line goes way down to negative six, meaning it was very dry. We all know it was dry over 2011. The water level responded in kind and came down. And then if you go all the way to the right-hand side of the, of the graph, you can see that we're in drought. It's not as severe a drought as we saw in 2011 over short term, but the water levels have declined even more. So we're getting a greater reaction either to the current drought or the amount of pumping that's come into Burnett County, and it could be a combination of both. But what we're seeing over that 10-year period is that there's a greater drawdown response in the aquifer than we saw 10 years ago. So again, either pumping or drought or both. Okay, the next slide is water quality. And basically, we've divided it up into the Lano Uplift measurements and then the Trinity measurements. In general, water quality is pretty good throughout the county. You can see on the Trinity side, so on the right-hand side plot, those dark red circles up to the north, those indicate that the water is greater than 1,000 milligrams per liter TDS, so we'd call that kind of salty. And so that's water that maybe you would want to treat before you drank it. I mean, certainly there are places in Texas where people use this water, and it's fine. But in general, the Trinity is fresh, except in that area to the, to the north there. And in the Lano Uplift Aquifer, basically, all the measurements we have show that the water quality is good. Those are generally gonna be Ellenberger wells. And then we do know there's some radionuclide problems in the Hickory in some portions of the, of the county. Those measurements are not shown here because they were not part of the data set, but we are aware that there are some radionuclide issues that need treatment in some of the smaller water, water systems in the western part of the county. Okay. Slide six, we're talking about porti, sorry, pumping. So on the right-hand side, we have a graph that shows reported pumping by aquifer. So the blue is the Ellenberger San Saba. So if you go all the way to 2022, you can see that the majority of pumping is from the Ellenberger. There are public water supply wells in the Ellenberger, and so a lot of the reported pumping comes from that. But if we look at the left-hand plot, that's the number of overall registered wells. And so what's happening in Burnett County is you all have some use of reported pumping by public water supply systems. So they're required to report the amount of water they use. But also, there's a lot of wells being drilled for private wells, right? You have developments coming in, and every lot gets a private well. And so we're getting new wells at a rate of about 385 wells drilled per year, and that equates to an increase in pumping from private wells. Again, this doesn't get reported because it's not required by law to be reported. So we're getting an increase of about 150 acre-feet per year. And our best estimates is that the amount of pumping from private wells right now is about equal to the amount that's being reported. So you take what's being reported by, you know, City Bertram or other places that use public water supply, and you basically double that to try, try to estimate how much additional pumping there is from all of these small private wells. So it's a little tough for us to get exactly at the, the amount of water that's being used because it doesn't have to be metered or reported, but that's our best estimate of how much additional pumping there is from those private wells. Okay, finally, just tried to kind of summarize it here in terms of the positives and challenges about the water, the groundwater resources in Burnett County. Positives, groundwater is broadly available. You can drill a well nearly anywhere in Burnett County, and you're gonna get some groundwater in general. There are some places where you can't, but in general. There's good productivity in some areas, so the Trinity Aquifer is generally not gonna support large wells. You're generally gonna be less than 100 gallons a minute. So if you're trying to make a, a public water supply out of the Trinity, you know, it's gonna be a small supply. The Ellenberger, on the other hand, you can make really good water out of the Ellenberger in some places, and so there's opportunities in the Ellenberger for much larger wells and larger water supplies. And the Ellenberger is a research I think y'all should study more in the future. You have relatively stable water levels, meaning that we aren't seeing these long-term decline trends that are, that are large. You do see a lot of variation with weather, and we do think we see some impacts from pumping as well, but it's not the kind of thing where you're seeing hundreds of feet of regional decline in the county. Overall, they're fairly stable at the moment. The water quality is generally drinkable everywhere in the county with some exceptions. Overall, pumping does not appear to exceed overall aquifer recharge, so we don't think we've exceeded the amount of water coming into the aquifer yet with the amount of pumping that's occurring in the county. And then recharge capacity, again, although the Ellenberger Aquifer, there hasn't been a lot of detailed study, I think it has a ton of opportunity for future development in the county if, if y'all choose to do that. All right, what are some challenges? There are definitely some areas of limited availability. The Trinity Aquifer is unproductive in some areas, especially to the north. There's basically places where the Trinity is just not present. And then also, the Lano Uplift Aquifer System can be kind of hit and miss in the sense that if you're drilling for Ellenberger well, you might drill a well, it's dry, you drill another one, it's dry, you drill another one, finally you hit water. So the reason for that is because you're relying on that well intersecting these little discrete fractures that are in the aquifer. So the water's not everywhere, it's in these little fractures, and so you might drill a well and not hit a fracture, drill three more, and you finally hit a fracture. So it can be a bit of a challenge in the Lano Uplift Aquifer System. When you get water, you generally get good water, but it might take a little trying. Trinity Aquifer challenges, we'll talk more about that in the next study, but basically because it's quite thin and has limited available drawdown, it's gonna be vulnerable to where you put a lot of wells in a small space. So if you concentrate pumping in the Trinity Aquifer, you can get drawdowns to the point where the wells will start to fail. So that's just one of the vulnerabilities we need to keep an eye on going forward. There's definitely increasing demand. Both the combination of increased pumping and drought conditions have led to some reported well failures. Herb has told me that he's has some, some folks telling him that they have shallow wells that have gone dry, so that, that is happening. Growth in pumping pressures in the northeast and eastern parts of the county have raised concerns about aquifer sustainability, and we're gonna talk a little bit more about that in the next study. So that is the, no, we got recommendations. All right, sorry, tried to end it too soon. So recommendations, and I talked about this. So if we have proposals that are gonna bring heavily concentrated pumping into the county, meaning people are drilling lots of wells in a small area, we need to really carefully evaluate those. The water level monitoring network in the vulnerable Trinity Aquifer areas, like north of 183, if we can expand that monitoring network and really pay a close eye, that's gonna be of value to the county. If we can improve recharge and discharge estimates for the Ellenberger, I talked about the Ellenberger as a potential really good resource for the county. It's being used now, but we don't really have our arms around how much additional use could, could happen in the future without impacting that aquifer. And I just wanted to make a note that Central Texas GCD has concerns with the growth and increased pumping, and they're working to expand that monitor network, and Mitchell can talk more about that. Okay, now I really am done. That was my summary. Thanks, guys. Any questions?
What's the thoughts on the fact that Williamson County doesn't have a water board over there, and of course, they're pumping on the Trinity? What is your thoughts on the good and bad situations of that?
Well, I've seen both sides of it. I mean, I think that a lot of the community wishes that they had a groundwater conservation district. It did kind of go up to vote and got voted down. They instead commissioned a pretty large study similar to this one, and that study's, it's either complete or coming to completion, and I think the question of whether they're gonna get a district is gonna come back up in front of the voters in the near future. I can't tell you exactly when. Yeah. I mean, obviously, I, I work for a lot of districts. I think districts are great. I think they support the local community and, and local resources, but that's just one man's opinion, you know?
Well, the worry for me is of the fact is how fast Williamson County is growing, especially in the Liberty Hill, Georgetown areas, et cetera. But, you know, it's a concern, especially for the folks on that side.
Yep, yep.
So some of these problems, we're gonna go over the specific problems of this specific area in a minute, but so when we, some of our answers go to telling our state officials about our water problems here. And the, so right here, it says, if we send this up to the state, it says, aquifer water levels have not significantly decreased due to pumping in much of the county. Most state officials are gonna go, oh, good. So I know what you mean.
Should I put the challenges first?
I know what you mean there, but, because I know you can put comma, except precinct two and a big chunk of precinct three.
Sure.
And probably others, but so.
You think the language should have been a little more cautious there? I, I totally understand what you're saying.
Sounds like it's fine.
It looks pretty rosy.
So I mean, you know, if you look around the state, if you look, say, in Tarrant County or whatever, where the entire county has lost 500 feet of water levels, right? That's not happening here, but.
If that happened here, we would have.
You'd be out of water.
We would be dry as dry.
Yeah.
Okay. That's my only.
I totally understand.
It looks a little rosy.
Little, little rosy.
From what I'm hearing out in the field, but this is your, I'll stop you in between.
I, I guess it's all relative, right? Yes.
Okay.
Good feedback.
Hey, one more, more question.
You bet.
How do you think that the lake levels are affecting, especially like, say, around Marble Falls areas, et cetera, and maybe out Buchanan and whatnot? When those levels do go down, is that truly affecting the well levels and whatnot or not?
I, I honestly, I would probably ask Mitchell that question, whether he's observed that kind of change. Do you have, you have evidence on that, Mitchell?
And as it comes up, I'd be remiss if I didn't note that Susan Patton is here with LCRRA sitting in the back. Thank you for being here.
Mitchell Sodek, GM for Central Texas Groundwater Conservation District. To answer your question, it affects the wells right adjacent to the lakes for the most part. Yeah, we have, you have some milluvial connections between the lake and the aquifers that are immediately adjacent to those lakes, and particularly Lake LBJ, there's a lot of granite gravel in that area, and there's a lot of shallow groundwater wells. When you move further up the system, up to Lake Buchanan, the geology is very complex up there. There's many different fault lines, so the answer is it depends. It depends locally what's going on. For the most part, though, the groundwater feeds the surface water. You have spring flow coming out, and it's contributing to base flows in the creeks and the rivers. So that means that your water tables and your groundwater is higher, and it's flowing towards those surface water features. But for the most part, you don't have this tremendous relationship that, that you may think. It's, it's a, it's a much smaller connection there.
The only thing I'd say about that, Mitchell, is that back in the past, I've heard some people talk about, especially over maybe around the Smithwick area, that they found what they think to be Trinity sands, maybe they're in the area of Lake Travis, so, so I didn't know how that might truly affect that area over on that side.
Yeah, when you get down to Lake Travis, the upper end of Lake Travis has minimal groundwater resources, especially immediately adjacent to the river and the lake there, which is a little bit deceiving from what your eyes tell you. But there, there's not a ton of groundwater in the Trinity system there, especially in Smithwick and in Spicewood, and I think that's pretty well-known to most people in those areas.
Yes, sir. That's right. Thank you.
Is there a well depth adjacent to, say, McCann, those that are right there, I think, for the water 200 feet or maybe a little or 300 or 400 feet, like you can get an aquifer?
You could probably use a general rule of thumb of 100 feet or less is gonna be somewhat of a connection between the lake and then things that are deeper, 200-plus feet would be independent, but that's just a general rule. But there are a number of wells, let's say, in the Cassie area where there are 50 feet, and they're in granite gravel, and the lake is, you know, right there. So those are, there's some connectivity there with that system.
Okay. Question?
Can anybody speak to the impact on our water supply that this proposed rock rushing quarry will have?
I, I'm not prepared to speak on that today. We have not had any, and I don't know if this is even a part of the agenda, but.
It's not. Well, I mean, go ahead.
Sure. The groundwater district will permit the groundwater withdrawals for that operation. We have not been approached by the applicant for that, so we don't know any details about where their water is coming from. There's multiple aquifers in the area. None of that has been discussed yet, and it will at some point when they need to use groundwater.
A quick question for Dr. Deeds, and you also, Mr. Sodek, while you're there, the impacts of pumping in Burnett County on stream flows and spring flows. Is that something y'all looked at? I know it's something we've talked about. Being an old man, I consider myself historical data. And, and the streams and creeks and rivers do not flow like they did 40 years ago.
Well, that's correct.
And, and that's, is, is there any way to? And, and that's, is, is there any way to add the pumping to this, the increased pumping to that?
So I, I think that the connection between groundwater and surface water exists, there's no doubt about that. The amount of surface water measurements that are taken in Burnett County is extremely limited. So our ability to analyze surface water in Burnett County is limited. So I, I don't think I got evidence for you other than your own eyes, but it's not in the data because we don't have the data, yeah.
Well, that and hear stories, people clearing all the cedars off their place and springs pop up, so that's part of the problem too, so.
I'll just add that I think when you look at the Trinity aquifer, it's multi-layered. So you've got an upper, a middle, and a lower Trinity aquifer. And, and all the streams, the San Gabriel rivers and those creeks that are in that area, they're, they're getting water out of the upper Trinity, which is not a particular layer that many wells are in. But there is connectivity, and we've seen this in the study, there's connectivity between those layers. So when you pump from the deeper layers, you will influence some vertical drawdown of those uppermost layers that are contributing to those, those spring flows and base flows. So there's a reality to it. And then, of course, the climate is, I think, the even bigger driver. You've got less going into the ground to then filter out through spring flow.
And I think the takeaway from that, just for public information, is that older wells or wells, if you, if your well is drilled into the upper level of the Trinity, you guys can come check it out, and it's good to test that and see the depths and all that stuff, because some people definitely need to be preparing for drilling deeper, or maybe they're just able to add pipe. But that's something that they need to start looking at. Fair?
That's fair, and, and that's obviously site-specific.
Right.
Some places you're not going to have an opportunity to drill deeper. But in other areas, you, you don't really have problems, as, as Neil's study showed. There are areas that have good groundwater, and they will not have these problems. But if I could kind of kick off this, this next study that Neil's going to talk about. And I wanted to thank you guys, first of all, to, and to remind everybody, y'all funded this through the American Rescue Plan Act, right? This is ARPA funding for a study that is not just going to be put on the shelf and forgotten about. This is, this is a tremendous effort to, to gather all the data that the groundwater district has and put it in this, this structure that then we can use. And so we've already begun doing that. And Neil's going to present a, a project that the groundwater district, we have been working with him and Tara on, to, to look now at very specific areas. And the idea is that the groundwater district will use these, this data to manage on a much smaller scale. Rather than countywide, we're going to be looking at individual sections of the aquifer and how we can manage those areas in what we call management zones. And the first one that we wanted to look at is what I call the Briggs-O'Callaghan area. This is basically north of 183, north and east of 183. It is a portion of the Trinity aquifer, and Neil's going to present the findings of that study. Mitchell's a little taller than me, if you didn't notice, I gotta adjust the mic back down. All right, thanks for the lead in, and we're going to talk a little bit about the, call them a drawdown sensitivity study in the Briggs-O'Callaghan area. Just a little bit of background on the first page. So our objective is really to look at the potential vulnerability of the Trinity aquifer in that area to de-watering from increased groundwater development. There had been a lot of private well development in that area with developments coming in, and each lot having a private well drilled on it, or at least plating for that. And so we were going to look at, you know, how vulnerable we think that is. In order to do that, we're going to, we characterized available drawdown, I'll talk more about what that means. Looked at the aquifer properties, we created a simple groundwater model. A model is created because you can't measure the future, right? In order to look at the future, you got to build, build a model and then try to predict what's going to happen. And models aren't perfect, and we'll talk about that. Assess the potential drawdown due to the known developments. So we have a lot of developments that are either come in or have been approved for plating, and so we're looking at the potential impacts of those. And then look at the potential drawdown impacts for any additional developments that come in. So first, we're looking at the developments we think are coming in, or they've been approved. And then next, we're going to say, well, okay, if those are in, then what's going to be the additional potential impacts of some more developments coming into the area? The final thing was to consider the potential effects of recharge on drawdown. When the developments get platted and a water available, availability study is done by, by a PG for those developments, they are often using a pretty simple approach to estimate drawdown that does not include consideration of recharge. So we were trying to get at, you know, how important is that? Does recharge really make a big difference? I'm not going to talk in detail about that, but I'll just, I'll briefly talk about it. All right, so next, next page, page three, let's talk about what available drawdown is. If you look at the right-hand side, this example is one that was developed when we were talking about the Dominion development. So if you see there's a shallow well and a deep well. And the shallow well, we're going to call a Glen Rose well, because it was, it was drilled down just to the Glen Rose, which is in the upper portion of the Trinity. And then the Travis Peak well is drilled all the way to the bottom of the Trinity. And the productive formations in the Travis Peak are called the Hensel, the Cow Creek, and the Hoston. And the Cow Creek and Hoston are divided by the hammet clay or shale in some places in the county. But what we're seeing difference here is that the bottom of the Travis Peak is about 580 feet below ground surface. The bottom of the Glen Rose is about 400. And so the difference in depth there is almost 200 feet on, on how deep you can drill a well. So why is that important? If you look at where the water level is, it's about 280. If you start with a Glen Rose well, and then you end up with about 120 feet of available drawdown, that means, you know, you can pump the water, if it doesn't rain for a while, the water level goes down. If you got a bunch of neighbors with 100 wells and they start pumping, you got 120 feet before you run out of water. If you drill it in the Travis Peak, you get an additional almost 200 feet of drawdown before your well's going to not produce water anymore. And so it's, those depths are really important, and, you know, y'all know this, that a deeper well is generally better for longevity. But I just want to talk about it really specifically. There's some critical limits, and you can look that, kind of that table on the left-hand side. You can start to run into trouble before you get water all the way down to the bottom of your aquifer. So the, the first time you're going to get trouble is if the water level gets to where your pump is, right? Your pump will start sucking air, and then you burn up your motor. So maybe you can add pipe and lower the pump. The second place is if the water level gets to the top of an aquifer. Because once it starts dropping below the top of the aquifer, the transmissivity of the aquifer decreases, and your yields are going to go down. If you're, you get, your well used to make 25 gallons a minute, maybe it'll make 15 now. So that's another point where you start losing yield. And then finally, when the water level gets all the way to the bottom of the aquifer, you're out of water. So what we're talking about today is that final critical limit where the water level is going to reach the bottom of the aquifer. That's what we're going to be talking about going forward with these, the, the figures that are shown next. All right, page four, so just kind of explaining the figures that we're going to show next. And also note that the water level and the bottoms of the aquifers, they were all taken from that study that y'all commissioned. So again, as Mitchell said, that study was fundamental to the work they were being able to do with this current one. So as you look at that figure, what we're showing is the available drawdown. And again, that's the amount, that's the distance that you can reduce your water level before you start to run into trouble. And in this case, we're calling trouble the bottom of the aquifer, so trouble means that you're out of water. The blank areas mean that the water level is actually below zero, and so it's basically going to be dry. The dark to white colors are showing the available drawdown, where if it's lighter, then you get more. If it's darker, you get less, and then the contours are showing the same thing, and the contours have labels. So you can see, is it 100 feet, is it 150 feet, is it 50 feet? So that's just an explanation, and this is showing the available drawdown to the bottom of the Glen Rose. These are current conditions, right? No new developments, just current conditions, not predicting anything, this is 2022. Looks like I put a notes page in there, it was blank, just skip that one, sorry about that. All right, so if we look at the page that has the bottom of the Cow Creek and the bottom of the Hoston, what we're seeing is that in the Cow Creek, if you go right down the middle of the study area, and again, we're showing a pretty large area here, but we're focused on that area north of 183. So that area is showing available drawdown of, let's say, 75 feet right down the middle, and it'll range from maybe 50 to 150 across there. So again, the Cow Creek is above the Hoston, so if we go to the Hoston, we'd expect we'd get more available drawdown. So the average is maybe 150 there, where we're varying from maybe 100 all the way up to 300 to the bottom of the Hoston. So that's the max we're going to see. And that's in 2023, so that's the water levels we had from 2023. So just to kind of summarize that on the next slide, in that table, we say as our formations get deeper, we go from Glen Rose to Hensel, to Cow Creek to Hoston. Depending on what region you are, are you in the west up dip, or are you in the east down dip, your available drawdown is going to range from about, you know, zero if you're west in the Glen Rose, all the way up to 300 plus if you're down dip in the Hoston. So there's a lot of variation across this area depending on where your wells are located. So that's what we're starting with here, current conditions. Okay, on the next slide, basically this is having developed this simple model, and we put in all of the expected developments based on the ones that have been approved. And so you can see in that table, each of the developments, you can see the number of wells that are associated with that development. And we assume about 0.25 gallons per minute for every one of those wells. That's about 0.4 acre feet per year, which is the average we're assuming everybody's going to use. And so that gives you the pumping rates for all those developments. When you put that into the model with our best estimates of all the properties, the drawdown contours are what you're seeing on the right. So around Dominion Ranch, you're seeing maybe 230 feet of drawdown in 30 years. Around River Hills Ranch, you're seeing 210 feet of drawdown in 30 years. And then regionally in the area, it varies from, let's say, a large contour of maybe 190, all the way down to maybe 100 feet of drawdown. So we're getting variation in drawdown between maybe 100 to 230 feet. Again, where that 230 feet is going to be really where those wells are focused at Dominion, which has got the most wells of those developments. So this is a prediction, 30 years from now, we're, we've got a lot of assumptions in that model. And so I'm not saying that 30 years from now, you can come back and measure, and it'll be exactly this. But this is what we're predicting, our best evidence right now, it's going to happen in 30 years under this pumping regime. So now we look at that amount of drawdown, and we look at those previous figures we just showed that said how much drawdown do we have available? And we can say to ourselves, okay, in 30 years, how much water level is going to be available, given these impacts that we're predicting? And that's what I'm going to show next. So in the next page, I just wanted to make a note about the assumption in the modeling. I would say we're conservative in some respects, meaning we're assuming every platted lot's going to have a well. That may not be the case in some cases, maybe all, people buy two lots, they only drill one well, that's a possibility. We're assuming every lot gets a well. We assume all those wells are active immediately, which is definitely not true, right? These things are going to build out over time. But we assumed all the wells are active right now, and then we're projecting it out 30 years. When in reality, it would build out over time, we're still going to get to the same result, but it might take a little longer than what we presented here. We're not conservatives in the sense that we didn't consider existing wells outside the known developments. So we only considered the wells that are associated with those developments listed in that table. There are a lot of existing wells there, they're not typically concentrated. That portion of the county didn't have a lot of concentrated pumping, but we are ignoring that for the purposes of this modeling. Okay, so on the next page is basically the result of when we take what we knew about the available drawdown today in 2023, well, today's 2024, but water level's in 2023, and we apply that predicted drawdown from all the known developments. So in the left-hand portion, we've got compared to the bottom of the Cow Creek. And the right-hand one, we have compared to the bottom of the Hoston. Remember, the bottom of the Hoston is the bottom of the aquifer, it's kind of the end, end game for us. So you can see for the Cow Creek, basically the entire area is blank, which means that the water level has dropped below the bottom of the Cow Creek. So the Cow Creek is dry at that point. Bottom of the Hoston, you can see about two-thirds of it has also dropped below the bottom of the aquifer. And so only in the eastern portion do you see that there's still water levels available. And if you remember where Dominion is, they're on the eastern part of the county, they still have water at this point because they're, they committed to drilling all their wells down to the bottom of the, of the Hoston, to the bottom of the Travis Peak. So that's the reason that their development showed having water after 30 years. But a lot of the western portion of this area would not have water after 30 years under these conditions. So again, I'm not like trying to sound some big alarm or panic or anything here, but given the modeling we're showing and the existing developments, it looks like there's a potential for wells to, to struggle in this area, especially shallow wells, over the next decade or two. Okay, so that was where we considered the known developments. We then tried to generalize it and look at the impacts of any new developments that are coming into the area. This is page 10 on your slides. And what we did is just to imagine different scenarios where we either have large developments with a lot of small lots, or small developments with small lots, large developments with large lots, small developments, large lots. We tried to do all the combinations of development sizes and lot sizes. So when you have small lots, it concentrates the pumping. And when you have large lots, it's less, it's less concentrated. And obviously, more developments means, or sorry, a larger development means more wells. So what we're trying to do is just sample all these possible combinations over nine sections. So we looked at a nine-square-mile area, and we looked at all the possible combinations of developments coming in and the sizes of lots and sizes of developments. So on the final slide there, you can see on the right-hand side.
If we could go back real quick.
You bet.
To the chart, it's probably just a typo. So you got, in the, within the derivatives of a section of 640 acres, you have it down to 140 within that, but you reference 160 on the text to the left, is that?
You're absolutely right, that's a typo, it should be 160 on the plot.
Okay.
Yeah, so we did a section, half-section, quarter, and then quarter-quarter, so it should be 160. Thank you for that. Good catch. Good catch. Okay, so what we see on the right-hand side is just an example of where you have large developments and very, and small lot sizes, and that concentrated pumping results in what's hard to read, but over 300 feet of drawdown. So that's the worst-case scenario, where you get a bunch of large developments come in with small lots. But what we found is really what drives this is the number of wells. So development size matters in the sense that bigger development, more wells. Lot size matters in the sense that smaller lots means more wells, but the more wells is what matters. And so if you look at the bottom plot, which is just a plot of the number of wells associated with that nine-section area and the overall average drawdown in feet, you can see that they trend almost linearly. So, you know, whatever the development size, whatever the lot size, you just got to count the wells. And then you look at this graph, and you say, all right, well, we got 200 wells coming in, it's going to cause about 100 feet of drawdown. So the number of wells is the primary factor, but the way that, you know, it could be, I don't, I don't want to say regulated, but basically the way it's going to be determined is because if you have large developments and small lots, that's what makes having a lot of wells. And so you guys probably knew that intuitively as well, but this plot right here at least tells you how much impact you can expect when you count the number of lots in a development. So just to go over the conclusions, in this particular area, the groundwater resources are somewhat limited because the transmissivity is pretty low in areas, and there's not a lot of available drawdown. The private wells that are associated with the developments could reduce long-term yields by lowering water levels. I think that's definitely going to happen. Recharge, I didn't talk a lot about, but we did do a study, and when we write up the report, it'll be in there. It can help, but we think it has a limited effect under current assumptions. And the number of wells in a region is, is the key factor for assessing how much drawdown is going to occur, which, you know, that's a, that's a conclusion that's held up then in that plot. So what are the recommendations? What I think is most important here is that we observe what's happening over the next couple of years. We really try to figure out whether the prediction that we're making right here is overly pessimistic, or maybe it's optimistic, or maybe it's right on. But I think the sooner we can kind of prove out, is this prediction right over the next few years, the more comfortable we'll all be with making decisions about what's going to happen in the future. And so I would say that tracking new wells, so when wells actually come online and, and monitoring water levels in the region should be the top priorities. So winter wells coming online and monitoring water levels, those are the key things for understanding whether this study, again, is overly pessimistic, optimistic, or right on the nose. That's it.
So, the more straws in this zone, that, that matters.
Yes.
And so, at this point, you know, while there may be some tracks of land that through water studies, it's been determined that it cannot be subdivided to the density level that is maybe desired, because the studies don't produce it. But converse to that, any legally created track has a right, at least in the unincorporated areas, I'm not going to speak for cities. They have the right to drill a well. So from a taking standpoint, you know, we're, we're not going to go there. But I just wanted to put that out there, that if, if you have a legally created track. But I just wanted to put that out there that if, if you have a legally created tract, you could still drill a well on it. Is that a fair assessment? No?
Yeah, I think.
Well, that's why I wanted to broach it. I just wanted to.
Sure, I think legally groundwater is a private property right. So I think you would have an opportunity, even if it's a very limited opportunity, you would have an opportunity to get to that private property, which makes this very challenging because this area, there are not a lot of large producing wells. In fact, there's no large producing wells that are permitted. So we're talking about individual domestic household wells.
Right.
And livestock wells, which makes this very challenging to manage because of what you just said.
But this data could help create a zone that could maybe have larger track sizes through the district?
Yes, so we, we could manage things on future developments and future land divisions, and how much those wells are able to produce. They could be severely limited, but they would still have an opportunity to get.
Size of the straw, so to say.
Yes.
So Mitchell, when you say manage those, I know last legislative session, 10 acres and above, we have no ability to require, well, they don't even have to file a plan, but we, we could require a water study for that subdivision. Now we can't, but I guess what I'm trying to do, our hands are pretty tied, 10 acres and above. Now, five acres, I think everything stayed the same. But what enforcement or management practice can you institute to serve that water?
Yeah, speaking of the 10 acres and above tracks, those are limited as well from the Groundler District perspective, because if they're, they are essentially exempt wells. They're exempt from regulation if they're for domestic and livestock purposes on greater than 10 acres. So that's a section we can't really touch, but the things that are less than that, I think the county and the Groundler District has some tools to use to manage. And we have to do what we have available to us.
Any other questions to the commissioners, Herb?
It's just a lot of data to digest here, but it is culmination. In 2019, the county began requiring groundwater availability studies. The groundwater district has a number of monitored wells scattered across the county. And we, we, my office has tried working really close with them to ensure every development coming in has an adequate sustainable water supply. And a key word there is sustainable.
That's where I was getting that we, a subdivision, 10-acre tracks and above, we, there's nothing.
We can't touch it.
The county. We, we can't require them to have a water study done to see if it will support the lots that they have.
I think that's currently correct, yes.
Hopefully that'll be able to fix before long.
Yeah. Well, obviously a very important issue. Been a lot of time on it. Probably, in retrospect, probably should have scheduled a separate workshop just for this topic. Just to, but since, is there any questions of the audience on any of this? Yes, ma'am.
I had a dope report about the Doublehorn Creek on County Road 404.
Right.
When I bought the property 10 years ago, it was a spectacular body of water, just beautiful. And every now and then when we get a decent rain that spring, it will fill up, but the evaporation rate is really serious and it goes away quickly. And it's pretty bad. There's a, there's a low spot just up, up creek from me that fits enough to keep the Longhorns, you know, the property. It's almost, it's almost dry.
No, it's very, I'm very familiar with that piece of property. I actually wanted to buy it, but my wife said no. But of course, it's during a flood, that house got water in it too. Yeah, so.
I didn't care.
Yeah.
It was beautiful.
Yeah.
I wonder, when you, the commercial developments come in, like the one at 281 and 247, that, that, does, does, are the developments required to set aside property that will not be developed? This is a Boston concept of the impermeable cover, so that you can't put too much concrete into a development. You have to advise the property and set it aside and not put concrete on it?
Well, hence the bird sanctuary that we've got on 1174. That's what happened because of Austin, but that's a city plated.
Those, those are developments within the city.
Totally understand, and I'm by no means an expert. They're sitting over there, but it's discussions we've had, concerns with the Elabora Aquifer, seems to be a lot of local recharge in that. And it is a concern in that area if a recharge feature gets built or paved up or concrete. And I'm sure these two gentlemen collaborate on that much more than I.
The question was, does the county have to be a part of that?
We don't.
All right. Well, thank you for all of that. A lot of work, and the good news is it's not some study that's just going to go on a shelf. It'll be an interactive exercise that will continue to be in play as we move forward. We all want to be responsible, you know, in the development of the county. This is a vital part of that.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to go to the top of the agenda. Dave Marsh here.
Right back in the back.
Didn't recognize him. It's been a long time, sir. Presentation from Dave Marsh, general manager of the Capital Area Rural Transportation System, known as CARTS. Good morning, sir.
Good morning. That was very informative. Thank you for letting me sit through that, about water. You know, CARTS is alive and well, and we appreciate all of the support we get from each county that we operate in. We operate in nine counties right now. We have a 10th county joining us in March, your neighbor, Lano County is joining CARTS, so we'll have it be a 10-county operation. But what people forget about y'all's jobs a lot of times is that all the regional boards that have to be staffed and managed and represented by each county. And it's really important to CARTS, the way it's set up to where each of the counties that participate in CARTS send one of their commissioners to serve on our board. When I go through the commissioners from Burnett County, hadn't been that many, you know? Longevity's been a good, good thing with Burnett County. But we're losing Billy Wall. We appreciate his service. And with me today is Dana Plant. She's the community engagement director at CARTS, and she would like to make a presentation to Mr. Wall for his service on our board.
Thank you, everyone. So I have a little plaque that I'd like to read to Billy. Commissioner Billy Wall's eight years of service on the CARTS board was characterized by his steady, dependable guidance for which CARTS is most grateful. Even though he had the farthest to drive to get here, he was usually the first one to arrive, and he managed to have one of the best attendance records of all time. Please accept our sincere thanks from the staff and the CARTS Board of Directors. Billy, we will miss you, but we won't forget you. Presented this 21st day of November, 2024.
Turn for the cameras there.
Thank you. I'll be a stranger. Hey, I'm happy to answer any questions about CARTS. I just kind of wanted to, Billy had a family emergency that day of our last board meeting, so I appreciate y'all taking time for us to give him that honor, Commissioners Court.
Absolutely. No, the CARTS is a great program, and a lot of people rely on it, and it's a good thing.
We're trying to grow with the county. You know how, you know how that growth problems are.
Yes, sir.
Takes money and time and all that, but we're trying. So anything we could ever do to make things better, please let us know.
All right, thank you.
Thank you again.
Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda, oh, good news. Discussion concerning acceptance, accepting the donation via probated will of, it's actually five tracts, but for all practical purposes, we'll call it four, tracts of land totaling approximately 800 acres in the vicinity of the intersection of Highway 29 and FM 2341. This property is known as the Hattie and Lehman Parks Family Ranch, and it was deeded to us from the estates of Donna Parks, as well as Doris Parks Gonzalez. The property has a stated value from a written broker's opinion of $17.2 million. And this is just good news for Burnett County today, tomorrow, and the next century, forever. Through some relationships that my parents had, Jim Luther's parents had with the owners, the, the daughters of Lehman Parks didn't have any heirs, and they did not want to see this property developed or sold. They wanted it to be used and enjoyed by the public. And so that includes a lot of things, hike and bike trails, place to ride horses, whatever this court decides to use that are within the parameters of that public use. But they can also include anything from annexes to animal shelter to any structure that serves the public. The beauty of this property is, is that it's already subdivided. It's divided, you know, by the highways. You have a lot of highway frontage. One of the tracts is also, has city water available to it. It's 125-acre tract that has water on two sides, city water, but the property itself is not in the city limits. I say that to say, because anything development-wise, we don't have as many regulatory rules in play on its use. I've been in talks with the city of Burnett, David Vaughn, the city manager, on, you know, ways to work together on the best way for this property to serve the public. For those that aren't familiar with, with 2341, it's the road that goes out, that services the lake. You know, everybody, when you grow up from here, you call it Lucky's Corner, which is short for Luxinger's Corner, where they sold minnows and gas and whatnot. But it's very exciting because, you know, the property itself, one of the tracts goes from Highway 29 all the way over to 3509 Hoover Valley Road. So that could be an opportunity for another connector route there. I've spent about five hours on a pickup touring it last week, and it is rough. On the western side of it is a lot of granite outcroppings, but there's not, it took that long because there's not really a lot of roads going through it. It's, it, it's purely natural. And the family loved that property, and, and they, they really, they cared about it, and they wanted to make sure that it didn't get developed. And that's what, you know, I gave, well, Commissioner Luther and I met with Ms. Donna Parks before she passed away, and, you know, that was our commitment, that we would stand by our word on that. And so it is a little bit encumbered that there's an individual, Mr. Arnold Warden, has been running, taken care of the place for 42 years, and he has a life estate to be able to, for, run cattle on it, as well as the hunting rights. And there's an old sandstone house that he has the right to live in, even though he doesn't live in it, he does have the right to live there. I have taken an excerpt from the will to put into the record today. I wanted to be able to, you know, generations from now, when someone wants to do a minute search, I want them to be able to find this. And that's, that's one of the reasons of putting this on the agenda. Anytime we have a donation, we, we recognize it as such. Chad Calhoun with Jim Berry Real Estate did the valuation on it. It is, again, unique that it's already subdivided. It's already in different tracts. And one of the tracts, you have to get to it by an easement, but it's not as worth as much as the other. But on average, he came up with a very conservative figure of $21,500 per acre. I think any highway frontage property that's got municipal water available on it will surely exceed that amount. So this is just a great thing for Burnett County. Is there any questions about this?
Are you taking public questions?
Sure.
Okay. Question on this, you said that it was not to be developed or sold, is that right?
That is the intent, yes.
Okay. And there was nothing attached to the agenda, the will that you're talking about, or the valuation? Can all of these documents, it sounds like there's.
Right here, if you'd like a copy. There's a copy of an excerpt, the will, the valuation letter, and as well as one version of a map.
Okay.
I didn't have it available at the time that the agenda was posted, that's why it's not attached.
So these ladies, they passed, the la, the last remaining person passed in 2023? The last person passed in 2023, is that right? So this has been.
I think that's, I think that's right. I'm not prepared for a test on that.
So the county has been aware of this for a while. What I'm wondering is, once again, I'm asking about long-term plans. Sounds like maybe there's been some investigation, you know, looking around, driving around and such, but if it's not to be developed or sold, but we're talking about values of frontage, and it's already been subdivided and things, I really would like to understand more clearly before we do anything, before the county does anything with the property, what's the plan for it? Do you already have a plan? Or are we just, today, are you just?
No, this is the first time it's been brought to the full court. Never seen news on this.
Okay.
And so the deeds were signed on November the 12th. They were filed on November the 18th, and is now on our agenda on the 10th of December.
Okay.
And I have some visionary thoughts of things that are an opportunity, but now we get to have, we have a, a, a very open canvas of things that we can master plan while respecting the intent of the, of the donation.
So when you said not developed, what does that mean in relation to what you're talking?
They didn't want it sold for houses being built on it.
Is that in deed restriction? Are there?
It doesn't have deed restrictions or some things stated in the copy of the will that I've made available to you.
Okay, all right. So that'll be in the minutes today?
She'll capture all the discussion.
And the paperwork here?
Yes, there'll be a copy derived for that.
Great, thank you.
Just a quick question, so that includes no commercial development as well?
That's my, that's my take on it.
Okay.
It's not commercial development, it's not to be sold.
Or, or residential.
Or residential, no.
Thank you.
It's to be forever owned by the county.
Okay, thank you.
And for public enjoyment and use and whatnot. So that is an action item because we're accepting a donation.
I'd move for acceptance of the donation.
Oh, I'm sorry, we got one question.
Is this property sort of behind the bank store?
Yes, sir.
It's on that side of the.
It's on boat, it's on, across the highway, it's behind the, the old Red Top Bake Shop.
Yeah.
It goes to the west. It's all three sides of that intersection, plus there's another non-contiguous tract. They're all non-contiguous because there's roads between them, but one of them is a separate tract unto itself, 160 acres. It's, it's accessible by an easement.
Thank you.
All right.
I'd move for acceptance of the donation.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in second for acceptance. Any other questions? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Judge, I want to hold on six and move it to the next agenda.
All right, I'm hearing that no action on item six. Seven, discussion action concerning reappointment of Kim Dickinson, Carol Young, Tice Porterfield to ESD number four, for board effective January 1, 2025. Commissioner Wall?
Yes, sir. I've talked to all three of them, and, and they've done a really good job, and they all want to come back and continue to serve ESD four, so I move for approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Eight, discussion action concerning the reappointment of Beth Dop and Dan Gilling to the ESD one. Pardon me if I butchered the name, to ESD one, board effective January 1, 2025. Commissioner Dockry?
I'd move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion in second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Let's do one more. Discussion on reappointment of Jerry. Discussion or action concerning reappointment of Jerry Wolf and Bob Price to ESD nine. Mr. Dockry?
I'd move for reappointment.
Second.
We have a motion in second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Gentlemen, I'd like to entertain about a five-minute recess. Is that okay?
Feeling quiet. Feeling cold, I cannot seem to get warmed up today.
I hope you sense some of the cold over here. I was sweating all day.
Really?
Oh, yeah.
I can't get any warmth in my hands, my hands are freezing.
Yeah, Judge, we can skip the replat again. They're not here today. Replat, that's gonna be it.
Which one?
Sixteen.
Sixteen.
I don't know what the holdup is. I don't know if they're having trouble getting P O A to sign.
Is Shirley here?
No action. Carry it over to the NAC.
Can we jump to twelve? Lisa has, courts gotta get to that.
Judge, does she need to be here?
Did you sign this?
Shirley needs to be here.
Uh, I don't guess so. Jim needs to sign it. All right. I was expecting much more gloom and- gloom and doom from this. Where's that? Where's that? They're all here. Okay, we'll come back from recess here at ten fifteen. I've got a request to go to item twelve, which is discussion or action regarding the appointment of public members to the Justice of the Peace Precinct Four Advisory Committee and the appointment of the chair, the chairperson of the Justice of the Peace Precinct Four Advisory Committee. Said advisory committee is assigned and tasked to make a recommendation of the Burnett County Commissioners Court for the appointment of the Justice of the Peace Precinct Four position. And that's going to be on February the eighth, I believe. Judge Benzel's here today, and February seventh is her last day, and so that's why we're starting the process. Final determination shall be made by the Burnett County Commissioners Court. So first things first, I'd like to entertain splitting this up into a couple of things and just do the chairperson first, and then let that person take the lead on the remainder of the agenda item. So I'd like to make the motion to make Commissioner Dockry the chairperson of that committee.
Second.
We have a motion in seconds. Are there any questions or comments? All in favor, please signify.
Public question. If the commissioners vote on the appointment of the J P, how can a voting member also chair the nomination committee? Is it appropriate? Just a question.
I'd say yes. We have a motion in second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Commissioner Dockry, I'd like to let you handle the rest of the agenda item.
I will abstain from that vote. If that makes anybody feel any better. I have had one person from the public contact me directly about serving on the appointment committee or the selection committee, recommendation committee, I should say. Glenna Hodge, she is an attorney at law in a memory and good standing at Texas State Bar. She's currently a resident in Precinct Four since two thousand fifteen and previously resided in Burnett County in Precinct Two, two thousand two to two thousand fifteen. She is a former board member and interim executive director for Casa of the Highland Lakes, former board member and general counsel for Open Door Recovery House in Marble Falls, former partner and director of governmental affairs for National Law Firm in Austin with thirty years of experience in Texas public policy and Texas legislative affairs, and I believe Glenna is with us today. Could you stand up so that-
Yes.
Okay, there you go. Anyway, I would make a motion to add her to the recommendation committee.
Second.
And just for clarification, could you name the ones that we are already on it? So it's not-
It, the existing committee makes, is made up of myself, Constable Missy Benzal, current Justice of the Peace, Debbie Benzal, and the four J Ps.
Three, the three other-
Three, three other J Ps, I'm sorry, three of the J Ps.
All right.
If we have one more to add, is this the time or is it separate motions?
I would say you should do it.
Same motion?
And do it all together.
Bill Ernest contacted me, we spoke about it yesterday, so I'd like to add him to your motion.
Okay.
Well, you're, I thought you were requiring it to go to you. I know some other people have required, but-
There's no-
Who, who did you mention?
Bill Ernest. I told him yesterday, he didn't tell me about a requirement, so.
Oh.
But Bill's here, so.
Oh, there he is. Okay, you're good with that?
I'm good with that.
All right, so the motion, was there a second on that?
I second.
And you have a question?
Yeah, I do. The J Ps have bench agreement, and we were talking at the last meeting about having, opening this up to members of the public who wanted to serve on the nomination committee, and even if they're not in Precinct Four because of the bench agreement. And I thought that that was where we left the nomination committee. Am I mistaken? Because I did ask to apply to be on the committee.
I, for one, think it needs to be somebody within the precinct, but Commissioner Dockry's the chair, so. We have a motion in second on the floor.
We do.
Call for a vote. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? None, motion passes five oh. So I believe you are taking applications for that position.
Till December twenty-seventh.
December the twenty-seventh for the press, that'd be-
And it is posted on our H R website.
Okay.
I'm sorry, did we, my question's still, I'm still unanswered as far as having only members elect, you have elected officials. How many members of the public are on your committee?
Glenna Hodge and Bill Ernest.
Okay, and how many elected officials?
Including the four J Ps, myself, it'd be, I guess, seven.
And how many appointed?
Of course, it's not required to have it at all. The Commissioners Court makes the appointments.
That's right, absolutely.
Okay.
But this is a significant issue of public interest, and I think that you need to have members of the public to balance out your elected officials in a situation like this, so.
Thank you. All right, next up would be item ten, discussion or action concerning rolling over holiday leave hours accruals for the sheriff's office, specifically patrol, communications, and jail. Mr. Byerly, you put that on there. My understanding, that's kind of automatic anyway?
We just want to make sure.
I know Shirley's not here, but Shirley did mention that she did feel that it was automatic.
Well, that's good.
But if you want to reinforce it with the vote, that's fine, but-
And that's what I'm going to ask. I've done it the last two years, so I'm asking also for the board to vote so that if there's not, there is any objection at a later date, that it has, that's correct.
That's what I thought, we've always voted on it. I didn't know anything was ever automatic.
Without a vote.
It just, the policy just says that holiday hours do not accrue, which is, when they do accrue, what does that entail?
Okay, so you have a motion?
I make a motion to make, allow rolling over of holiday leave hours and accrual for sheriff's office, specifically patrol, communications, and jail, which is shift work, basically.
Twenty-four seven, twenty-four seven.
Twenty-four seven shift workers. A unique situation, that's my motion.
Second.
We have a motion in second.
Can I?
Any questions, sir?
Before the vote, can I ask one other thing?
Sure.
In previous years, we also talked about a select few of those that are holiday, holiday, vacation hours. So the attempt of trying to burn down their vacations so that they're under a hundred and twenty, or eighty or a hundred and twenty, and then also burn their holiday time, we've got a, probably a handful of maybe, for sure, three dispatchers and probably at least four or five jailers that have a combined of the two of five hundred hours. And so they're, they stand to also, if those vacation hours, if there's not an exemption on the hundred, whether they get either eighty or one twenty, will lose those hours as well annually.
All I can say is I need to make sure we stay on topic, and this is relegated to holiday leave.
And so I can ask for it again on the nineteenth.
Yeah, yeah, and so unless you have something to add to that, no, yes?
No, sir.
Okay. We have a motion in second on the floor. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Now, item eleven, discussion or action concerning forming a committee to discuss options for holiday leave for the sheriff's office patrol, dispatch, jail staff for the next fiscal year to include resolving the current, the current issue with the abundance of hours on the books for the sheriff's office employees and addressing new policies, and addressing new policy to eliminate issues in the future.
Right, so this is an item that keeps getting kicked, I guess, down the street. So Chief Trevino and I were talking, and I know y'all have had a lot of talks about it, and trying to figure out how to fix this going into the future so they don't just keep rolling over and then, you know, not get paid for the time that's owed to them. So we just want to make sure any policies that we need to bring for the sheriff's office policies or our policies might need to be amended to address this issue that's just growing.
Well, sheriff's office will set their own policies.
Right, that's what Eddie Ordano told me, the sheriff's office can set their own policies and then bring them to court, if it requires funding.
Yeah. I'm just not, this is a sheriff's office issue, I'm not sure it's a Commissioners Court issue to set up a committee.
Well, the, and, and-
Because we approve a budget for the year, and it's management after that.
You also approved a budget in two thousand eighteen that previously anybody that worked a holiday, any twenty-four seven hour workers would, if they did not use the time within a hundred and eighty days, would be paid for it. This policy only affects the sheriff's office twenty-four seven.
If I remember correctly, it would be paid for if the budget would sustain it.
We've got the policy here, it says-
Well, I mean, you can't, you can't just make up money.
Yeah.
So, I mean, and I think that's what it gets down to, is-
And the original, the original change, why was the policy changed? The only people that it affects is twenty-four seven workers, and as I've had discussion, the only ones that it-
Yeah, I don't know, I need Shirley here to talk about, there was a policy change. I don't remember anything about that.
It was in two thousand eighteen. I've got the twenty seventeen, twenty sixteen, and the two thousand eighteen policies here.
I'm not aware of what justified a change.
And, and since then, it has become, it actually, in year two of that policy, it became an issue because every county employee gets a hundred and twelve hours holiday time. When your workers can't take that time off, I've got workers that have three hundred-plus hours of holiday time, and the, and then the solution is, whenever they leave employment with Burnett County, whether it be via termination from the agency, or they decide to leave-
Retirement, whatever.
Yeah, they lose three hundred hours that they earned when everybody else that's sitting here at this table and anybody else that's elected gets those days off. And so the people that are working the holidays, the Christmases, the New Years, the Thanksgiving, so that all of us can enjoy those days off, are, are losing their time. It's just not, it just seems backwards, and I've been trying to fix it for the last two and a half years. I've had a couple of meetings with H R, with the auditor's office. We just had a meeting two weeks ago that included a group of quite a few people, and it just keeps getting kicked down the road. Nothing gets resolved, and I'm trying to get it-
It really just gets down to money.
Well, so, so if the verbiage, so, so if the verbiage is incorrect, and there's nothing we can do about it today, I'll present it again on, or I'll ask for it to be on the court again for the nineteenth so that we can resolve it and we can form a committee so that we can actually deal with the issue. We know about the issue, and we're doing nothing about it. If we're, if, if you know about it and you're not doing anything about it, maybe you're the problem.
Well, it sounds like from what, you, we can form a committee, the sheriff's office can form a committee without court action and then bring in recommendations.
Sure.
Is that accurate?
Absolutely.
And the court can also, and presented as a county issue-
Right.
On the nineteenth, presented as a county issue with this policy, the court can also- the court can also form a committee to, to have the Auditor's Office, the HR, myself, maybe Kimbler, certain people that can, can research options to be able to fix the problem and not just, and not just keep on saying, well, there's nothing we can do about it, we can't put it on the agenda, we can't. I've asked for it, I asked for it to be on the agenda, the previous agenda, and that's what spurred the meeting.
It's on the agenda today.
No, but the first time I asked for it, it wasn't. I asked for it and you requested to have a meeting rather than to have it put on the agenda, and the meeting resolved nothing. And so I want, I want to, to move, move it forward, not continue to say, okay, well, we talked about it, let's wait again till next year and see how bad it is then.
It's not to start that process now with Auditor's Office and Kimbler and.
I, I understand that, and my, my, we're, we're going to have to do that. Why not present it, you know, my fault. I sent the wording in to Commissioner Byerly on how it needed to read on the agenda. I'll correct that so that it will be an item that's adjusted or addressed in court with, and, and you five gentlemen can decide whether or not we want to have a committee for it.
I, I want to make sure, I'm not sure how it's worded that we can't. You know, I'm, I'm not sure what wording needs to be changed to have a discussion about it from what it is today. Am I missing something, or is it?
I believe that it's probably specific to the Sheriff's Office.
So it sounds like you can make a committee.
Can't set policy for our department.
And I, I understand that we can, the Sheriff's Office can form a committee. What I'm asking is that this court form a committee so that it is a county policy that is presented, not a Sheriff's Office policy, that only if, the policy, when it changed, affected a hundred percent of Barnett County employees. The, the current policy, the way that it is now, the only one it affects negatively is a hundred percent the Sheriff's Office employees. No other employees, so we, I think you said the other day, we have three hundred and fifty employees?
Roughly.
Thirty-eight percent of those employees it affects. And those are the, those thirty-eight are those that are twenty-four seven workers that are not being allowed the opportunity to get paid for their holiday leave. And so my point is, my point is the origin, my point is the original policy, while it was a county policy, affected everybody in the county, but it really only affected the Sheriff's Office.
But they could also take the time, correct? As opposed to, in other words, you've got, person's got eighty hours.
Okay, so if I've got, if I've got three hundred hours of vacation, of, of holiday time, and I've got two hundred hours of, of vacation time, tell me when I'm going to have enough weeks to take off whenever we're shorthanded at, in dispatch. I've got, I've got twelve dispatchers, two openings, and four that are being trained. So I literally have seven, seven working dispatchers that can actually work by themselves, and four of those are handling, are handling training for, for the rest of the staff. And so they can't take time off. And it's just getting worse and worse every year, both for dispatch, for, for dispatch, for the jail, and for the patrol. They just can't take time off. You, you work shift work, you're familiar with, you can't, you can't, you're working twelve-hour shifts, and you're working three, three on, and the next week you're working four on. So it's, it's, you can't always, schedules are not always going to allow you to take the time off, and it's also been said that, well, the county's very generous with holidays, and that's why they can't.
We follow the state.
Sure, no, but, but that the county's very generous with holidays, and so they, they can't take all that time off. The rest of us get to, is my point, is all of us that are in administrative, all of us that are, even my guys that are CID, they get to take off unless they're called out. My, the other groups would be just the administrative people, so it doesn't, out of the, out of the thirty-eight percent, that is just patrol, jail, and dispatchers. Because the Sheriff's Office makes up about forty, close to forty-five percent of the entire Barnett County employee as a whole. This only affects, affects the thirty-eight, and I'm, I'm fighting to try to make sure that those guys, I've done the job. I've, I've had to work holidays, and I've had to work, and it, to me, it's cheating those employees of time that they earned because if they leave their employment, they lose it. And so I'm just, I'm trying to fix it so that it's not a problem in the future.
Chief, what's your theory of how to fix it?
There's a few ways to do it. We can, we can put a cap, we can put a cap on the, on the holidays. There used to be a cap in this county on how many hours of holiday you could pay, you could, you could, you could bank, and over those hours you got paid. So if I had two hundred hours on the books, and we can do that, we have two hundred hours on the books, and you work, and then you get another holiday, well, it's going to push you at two hundred and eight, so I know I have to use eight hours. It's still on the books, but we have to do something with that two hundred hours that they don't lose at the end of employment. And, and one of the ways that you can do it is you can tack that on to holiday, to vacation. That's why I'm asking to form a committee, because there's a bunch of ways that you can do it. We're going to have to, it, it probably will take more than just changing the holiday leave policy. It'll probably have to change some, some vacation leave policy.
And I'm not sure how transferable, that would be something with Shirley and the auditor.
It happens with, happens in other county, in other agencies all the time. DPS transfers their hours, sure.
Just because somebody else does it, does, I just want to make sure we're legal. If something, if I'm transferring what was holiday pay and making that now vacation, or making it sick, or something, I'm not sure how transferable they are. I'm not saying it's not.
Sure.
But if there's some employment laws we need to respect, we need to respect.
Sick leave can be transferred to vacation time and, and go towards your, towards your retirement. And instead of retiring at twenty years, I retired at twenty-one and a half years because of my sick leave that rolled over to my retirement. So there, there's ways to make it work, it's, but it needs the auditor, it needs probably somebody from this board, from this Commissioners Court. It needs HR, it needs maybe somebody from TAC that, that shows us what other counties are doing.
And if it's money out, let's face it, it's funding. You have to budget, you have to budget that as an expenditure. And so if you're, if you're living under the caps that we are with the legislatures put on us, and we're at the maximum now, so if you want to add that in to a future budget, then that needs something else to.
Two weeks ago, Shirley had the numbers ready, and it was six hundred, roughly six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That, that thirty-eight percent of your county is going to, is, you know, at, at the expense of, of your deputies, your communications people and your jailers.
I get it, so within the budget process, in the budget process, you just have to prioritize if you want that money to go to that or to other things.
The county created the policy, so there should be some county involvement in fixing the issue.
Well, I think, and this comes further down the road, but, you know, every year, and I know we dedicated an intent to give back some of the Sheriff's Office and Jail money to fix some of the problems. And so last year, we got our fund balance to fifteen million. This year, we'll find out how much is going to be in that, and this, we're not taking action now, but obviously, we don't need to add another dime to our fund balance until we fix our problems.
I would agree a hundred percent.
Because it's beyond an acceptable level from what our auditors have been telling us. The guy when he comes in.
Beyond an acceptable level?
Beyond, well, like, he said that we are above the recommended level.
Thank you, big difference.
Right, but if, we can't just keep putting money into an account that we can never touch and not fix our problems. So my goal is that we fix our problems with that money instead of just making the emergency fund larger.
And, and this is intended to be a fiscal year twenty twenty-six fix, not here so that we have the answers, we know what, what, the, the financial burden's going to be on the county so that we, and where we're going to need to find that money, and there's.
I, I guess, and this is not kicking the can down the road, it's the appropriate segue of time to address this. You can talk about it and come up with a prescription, but we can't fill the prescription until we go through the budget process. This is part because it involves money, so we will get the ducks in a row, come up with, come up with some ideas, but it has.
Why not have some of the resolution to, here's, here's how the, what the fix is.
You've come up with ideas now, but I'm just saying.
But I'm talking about from a county involvement. This is a, and, okay, yeah, we can have a committee, just the Sheriff's Office. But it sure does, I guess, to me, the, the policy was changed at a county level. Why are y'all insisting that the policy needs to be changed now only at the Sheriff's Office level to address it? When it affects.
I'm not insisting on anything. I mean, you're, you, you used the word, y'all are insisting, I'm not insisting on anything.
Well, it was presented almost a month ago to be put on the agenda. It didn't get put on the agenda. We had a meeting, it was presented again to be put on the agenda, now the wording is wrong, so let's correct the wording. So I'll put it, I'll ask for it to be put.
I'm not trying to get out of anything because.
It's kicking it down the road, it's making it a.
I'm not trying to get out of anything for the way it's worded on the agenda today, so be clear about that.
Sure, and I'll, I'll.
I'm telling you, if you want to make, there's, I don't see a mid-year fix on this because it's a budget.
I'm not asking for a mid-year fix, or.
Right.
I just, I just said that.
And get ready, as we prepare the budget, as y'all prepare your budget, which is half of the county's budget.
Yes, sir.
To, you know, to get prioritized where that goes. Just keep in mind, due to the legislature, there's only so much available. And we are maxed out right now.
And we turn, that fund balance, we just turned in three million into, from twelve to fifteen.
That's right, and our officer are probably going to take away our ability to do short-term notes. So if you have any sort of capital outlay, you're probably not going to be able to do it. So it might be smart to have things, you know, have, be, be a conservative fiscal planner. But that's a little bit running off of the agenda item, I don't want to get too far off of that on there, so.
Commissioner Byerly, you, you have a, you have an agenda item on you.
Wasn't this policy changed by the HR committee meeting in twenty eighteen? Is that when the policy was changed?
That's when the policy did change.
HR committee, okay.
Yeah, I don't remember. Yeah, so if you got a, if you got a motion on this?
Well, the county attorney said we can't take action because of some wording in it.
Well, but you, can you not take action, create a committee?
Well, that's what I'm asking.
All right, great.
I was told we couldn't.
The current wording has to do with strictly the Sheriff's Department. Commissioners Court doesn't control the Sheriff's Department, the sheriff controls the Sheriff's Department. What the Commissioners Court, what the issue is with the Sheriff's Office has to do with a county-wide policy on employees in specifically having to do with shift work. Just by chance, that, that's mostly in the Sheriff's Office, but you control policy countywide. You don't control policy inside the Sheriff's Office.
Right.
But what the Sheriff's Office is trying to tell you is, hey, this county-wide policy that we have right now, that's causing a problem inside our office. We would like for you to look at this and help us try to figure out something. And from what I understand, it's not that they expect an answer today. What they're saying is, what they'd like to do is get people together to start studying it so that it matches up exactly with what you're saying, Judge, that when it comes to budget time, some, some, some decisions can be made at that time with a little bit of knowledge and study. That, I think everybody's saying the same thing, it's just a little bit different. But what'd be my recommendation is that you could put the wording on for next time because it needs to be a county-wide policy, it's not just for Sheriff's Office. And if the Commissioners Court wishes to, yes, it can create a committee to help the Sheriff's Office study the issue because it's not just an issue for the Sheriff's Office, it's a whole county-wide policy that happens to be causing problems inside the Sheriff's Office. Hope that makes sense.
Is that amount that was mentioned, six hundred, is that a booked liability?
Microphone.
Holiday is not a liability on the financial statements, vacation is.
Okay. The question was, was this figure that was, that was discussed, the six hundred thousand and the value of the hours, is that a booked liability? And the answer was no. Because in a bigger picture, that's where this court.
So action cannot be taken on this agenda item? I think that's what Commissioner Docries was asking, is there any?
I think the wording is off, I think the wording needs to be changed, and public needs to have its notice about it. So, I mean, we know what the problem is, so if, if we can just handle it for the next time we get together and change the wording to, so that it, it explains that it's a county-wide policy that needs to be adjusted, not, not the Sheriff's Office. Inside the Sheriff's Office, it's where the problem is being found.
I know of a, I know of an agency to where they pay the holiday team at the time.
I, I asked for that in the meeting that we had.
You just have to budget for it. You have to kind of figure what's coming down the chute. That doesn't address old.
Sure.
But as far as something happens then.
That's what I was trying to fix.
Right.
Two weeks ago, I said, let's just pay everybody across the board as opposed to not paying the twenty-four seven people, that they earn it because they can't take it. And here we are.
Well, Mr. County Attorney, I would appreciate it if you could modify, and I hate to speak to you in my back turn, but I'm not going to move away from the mic, so if you don't mind, could you adjust the language so that we can address this when we meet a week from Thursday?
I'm happy to work with the chief on that, should be able to get it done. And again, I, I don't think the Sheriff's Office is looking to, to fix the problem like immediately because it's funding. But it's something, if we can look at it as a group, we could start exploring the different solutions, and then the Commissioners Court would be in the best position to know whether or not it can adjust the policy that it has. And, you know, financial decisions can be made by the Commissioners Court, and also, as the judge pointed out, it may be that the Sheriff's Office needs to make some adjustments as to what it's going to be asking for. Nobody knows that right now, it just needs to be studied. That's the question right now. Can it be studied as a group of people so that we can come to some good solutions looking into FY twenty-six?
So what I'm hearing is no action today.
I got one question. So what you're saying is, is once we change the verbiage, that what the chief said as far as the different entities that he explained, or went through, that they could form a board to, to get down to the bottom of this?
They, they can do that on their own, but it's not, it's, it's a county policy that's causing the issue. So it really, it would be best if the county Commissioners Court could look at the overall policy and make adjustments from there, or at least study it, and work with the Sheriff's Office. I think that's what.
Forming a committee requested by the, the Commissioners Court certainly has more teeth whenever you're involving a certain amount of people to say, we're meeting as a committee to resolve this, and, and having the financial numbers, having the, the the HR backing, the legal backing and all that so that it's done properly, not the Sheriff's Office trying to present it, working with a few people and then, and then presenting it.
Okay.
We'll bring it back.
Okay, so no action on item eleven, we've already done twelve, thirteen.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
Thirteen is Discussion Action Regarding Cyber Security Insurance Coverage. It's got my name on it, but I'm not the SME on this, so. We have a, is there an opportunity for another level of insurance, is that right?
No, currently, we have one million dollars' worth of cybersecurity coverage. Next year, they are going to drop that to five hundred thousand. The only way we can keep the million dollars' worth of cybersecurity is to answer three questions and be in compliance with three different items. The one that we are not in compliance with is we have to use multi-factor authentication on our emails. So if we do not implement multi-factor authentication for emails, then we cannot keep our million dollars' worth of coverage.
So when, when is the decision point on this need to be made? When are they switching it from a million to five hundred? When do we, is there a, a date associated with this?
It's July. I, I, I believe it's July, but I will, I'll have to check on that for you.
But the, the thing that we're not doing, that would make us have the million dollars of coverage, is the multi-authentication process.
Yes, now, we do have to get the, we do have to get a questionnaire back to the insurance company because that's going to go to underwriting and then make the decision about whether we're eligible for the million dollars' worth of coverage. So we do have to get the questionnaire back to the insurance company in a timely manner.
So on this multi-authentication thing, is that a big? What, what is that?
Everyone's probably used MFA at some point.
Jackie Haynes or IT.
Person.
Person.
It's, you get a code sent to an app on your phone. So it's another layer of verification that you're the person that should be accessing the device.
So if you're trying to get onto the network from a mobile device or a device that's not.
From your computer.
From your actual computer. If you try to log on to the system, it's going to say, hold on, we're going to send a code to some other device. Not the computer.
Right.
So that's going to require that another per, that, that employee has another device.
Yes.
Do you see that as a problem? Most people have cell phones. I'm, I'm trying to understand what the impact is.
I don't, I, I guess it would require people to have a device that, that they could either have data on, you know, I don't know if everybody has a cell phone, if they're able to pay a cell phone bill, or if they can get on the employee Wi-Fi and access it that way, that's also an option.
I just don't know how much of a hardship this produces.
I don't either.
I don't either. But it's a requirement to have the, the million-dollar policy, multi-factor. It's also best practice. It's very highly recommended by any cybersecurity firm or.
So anytime an employee in the clerk's office will say, comes, sits down, they have to go through, anytime they've logged off, they want to log back on, they have to go through.
This, this one's just email. This one's just email.
This is all, I mean, the world's changing before our eyes, so, you know, we're not unique in that regard. But you do need to understand that the vast majority of employees in this county do not have a county-issued cellphone. So if you're going to be requiring us to be entering things, guess what? Then you're going to have to issue out cell phones to every single employee. And that's just the way, I don't know what the solution is. Somewhere in there, there's, there's something that's reasonable because security is definitely an important thing that we have to maintain.
Yeah, so here it is with all the decorations outside. It's Christmas. And this, it looks like this is more of a July thing. So maybe we can do a little due diligence, study this, maybe see what some other smaller counties are doing. You know, we're not, need to invent the wheel on this. The insurance coverage itself is to cover, from my understanding, whenever there's been a, if there's been a breach of the network, any sort of lost data, lawsuits, things like that. It doesn't cover a terminal going out or something like that, correct?
No, this is cybersecurity insurance from my understanding. And maybe if it's just to access email, you can have the app on your device and, and have it sent to an app on your device. I don't.
Yeah, that's just an example in this. It just says, receiving a text message to validate login. But it's, it's just an example. There's got to be other ways to do that without having to have a cellphone in your hand.
And the requirement is just email-based. It's not to get into the network. It's the, on the insurance, we just have to have the dual authentication for the county-wide emails.
But Eddie's point remains the same, that you're requiring the use of a personal device. And someone might say, no, you're not going to use it for that, and we can't.
Well, if it's just to access email and you're already in your computer, maybe you could have the application on your device, your computer, not your phone.
Let's just, let's do some looking and see if there's not a, how other people are digesting and, and doing this.
Oh, yeah, we're for sure not the only ones.
Yeah, okay. Questions? So what I'm hearing is no action on this, correct?
And I will find the deadline for, for responding to the insurance company on the questionnaire.
Any questions, anybody? All right, so no action on this agenda item. Fourteen, discussion or action regarding a ban on the sale or the use of aerial fireworks classified under forty-nine C F R, section one seventy-three dot one hundred R two, skyrockets or sticks or missiles with fins pursuant to Texas Local Government Code three fifty-two dot oh five one for the unincorporated areas of Burnet County, otherwise known as stick stems or rudders, right?
Right.
We do it every year. Yeah, when they condition.
When the conditions were, were still well above five seventy-five on the K D I. We've got fireworks period coming up, probably December twenty-first, three January.
Yeah. So then. So the intent of this is not to say that you can't pop a firecracker, saying you can't send off something that could be still smoldering when it hits the ground and, and your or somebody else's pasture and catch something on fire.
That's the guess.
That sums it up, for those that might be interested. Okay, so this is on here to put a ban on those such devices.
Sale and use.
Sale and use. Is there any questions, comments, or motions?
Second.
We have a motion, a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. All right. Sixteen is no action on that. The surveyors aren't ready on that. Seventeen, discussion or action concerning the burn ban for the unincorporated areas of Burnet County. Whenever this court puts a burn ban on and, or ratifies one that I put on, it has a ninety-day life expectancy or expiration date. And so our ninety days is up, so we need to, if we want to have a burn ban on, we need to vote to, to keep that instated. So is there any questions, comments, or motions?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any questions? You're shaking your head back there. No, I thought you might have a question or something. Trying to read the crowd.
He's got a brush pile probably.
We need rain, sir. I was hoping this past weekend was going to be more productive, so.
We talked a couple times.
Yeah, we did. It's like, we're just not there yet, you know, it's. Especially whenever you have a prediction, when you have some rain, but then you have a prediction of what's happening today with dryer, with wind coming through that's going to exacerbate the smoldering pile. It's just not good. All right, we have a motion, a second. No other questions. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Eighteen would be discussion concerning an update from the Development Services Department. Sir Herb.
Herb Darling, Burnet County Development Services. This is a lot of my observations for the past year. Actually, a year and a half within Burnet County. Our development overall has, has tapered. It's, it's simmered down except for, of course, precinct four and the areas around the cities where you have water and sewer readily available. And, and that ties to a couple of things. You get to looking at the cost of land, the type of development you can do on it to return on investments. So naturally, people are looking for public water supply, public sewer supply. So you can make, excuse me, the lot smaller. We've still got quite a few ten-acre projects going, and that's something we touched earlier on during the water discussion. State law prohibits us in the groundwater district from anything over ten acres. It, it's just the nature of the beast. Going back to my observations in the last year to eighteen months throughout the county, I want to commend the commissioners for doing a really good job of, of upgrading interconnective roads, rehabbing them. Of course, they will quickly tell you it's been at the detriment of some of their minor collector roads. Some of their less-traveled roads are taking a beating because they've had to put a lot of their resources in. But I just wanted to let y'all know I've noticed it. And, and it's very needed where you're at out there. We, we have got the high-volume roads in pretty good shape and, and you guys are pushing back on your less, lesser-traveled roads. I, I know it's, it's been a tough and a strange, but y'all have got it done. I'm a little disappointed with Tech Dot out there. We've had discussions internally, externally. We are just getting hammered with traffic fatalities. It, it seems like hardly a week goes by without a fatality on Highway twenty-nine. I do understand those projects are in the works. But the state of Texas has done a really poor job of planning for this influx of people they've invited in. And, and I'm a little disappointed with the legislature and items they seem to want to work on. And I would implore the court to urge them, this session coming up, what, what connections you have, to, to look at power out there. Let's, let's work on our power grid. Let's definitely look at the transportation systems around. They're going to, they're going, they can't sit there and say, we need to put more money here. They, they have got to come out and do it. We, we have got to take immediate action on it. Medical. Hell, I'm an old man, so I go to the doctor.
You said that twice, Attorney.
I think everybody here knows I'm an old man. There's not much left and what's there is white. But a doctor's appointment, three to six months out. Hell, I'm either dead or well by the time I get to see him. Had an annual, annual trip over around Rock Scott and White. I drove around the parking lot, fifteen minutes hunting a parking place. Good thing I got a four-wheel drive truck.
Hell.
And they didn't tow me. Public safety. I'm back and forth between my office and a courthouse most days, three to six times a day. Every time I step out, I hear sirens. Our, our first responders are stretched to the limit. I can, I, I'm close enough to two eighty-one in town where I can hear sirens on the weekends hourly. Hourly. And, and the legislature needs to understand, that puts a strain on y'all. You're, you're limited with the funds you can raise. You know, we just heard from chief back there, they're struggling to hire people, keep people in place, and, and they're working their tails off. And the state of Texas has brought all this on us. It's time they helped us. That's my public opinion. But I'm going to finish on water. And, and that was a very good and informative update from Dr. Deeds and Mr. Sodak this morning on that. I felt that was very important for Burnet County. That's been one of my priorities this year, is getting that study done. Because development, is that my three-minute time?
No, this is, this is not a public comment.
Because development is not worth a dime. That's Christmasy. It's, it's not worth a dime unless it's sustainable. I speak to a lot of groups, and I'm speaking to another group later today. And, and one of the things I harp on is water. Water, water. That's three most important things in Burnet County. Water, water and water. And I always tell these people, I'm an old cowboy. And you can only put so many head of cattle in a pasture before they run out of water. We've reached our limit of cattle in our pasture. It's not just for Burnet County. It's for the entire central Texas area. I will end with this. I say we're going to run out of water. And I had a gentleman last year correct me. He said, Mr. Darling, you are wrong. We are not going to run out of water. And I said, oh, no, we are going to run out of water. He said, you're absolutely wrong. We're going to run out of water you can afford. Thank you, gentlemen.
As you brought up the Highway twenty-nine project, in, in full disclosure, or at least speak for them a little bit, and we've advocated for improvements on twenty-nine for several years now. And that's gone through the process. There's, the, the projects are funded. That's to add a center turn lane from Burnet to just outside, I believe it's Dahlia.
Laney.
Dahlia, right outside of Bertram. And then that's where it's already got one from there on in. And then on the east side of Bertram, just past the Williamson County line, past where the old park was. Those projects are funded. They're designed, they're funded, they're ready to go. They're waiting on the utilities to get out of the way. And when I say utilities, it's not P E C. It's a certain communications company that's historically been slow to do things. But I spoke with our area engineer yesterday, and we got a little something in writing. I mean, they're going to try and accelerate that and put some, some pressures on that. I advocated, certainly there's some work that could be done prior to the utilities being moved because it's not, you know, it can be a project that's in parallel, not series. So that you can, there are certain things that you could be able to do. Generally speaking, they won't enter into a contract and, or even let a project until it's ready to go from a utilities standpoint. But it is, it's very unfortunate. And what, what's happening is people are getting rear-ended when they're trying to turn left where there's not a center turn lane. And, you know, these do not help the situation. These are not part of driving. But they tend to affect, you have a lot of distracted drivers out there. At the same time, when you're driving in a seventy-mile-an-hour zone, you don't anticipate there to be a stopped car in front of you in a, in a traffic lane. So it's a, it's, it's, it's a process to go through to get projects going with Tech Dot. And, but I agree from the legislative standpoint that anything we can do to get our infrastructure going and to be a little bit more proactive than necessarily reactive, I think that's a, that's a good thing. All right.
One, Judge, one amendment to what you said. Lane, there is a small section from Laney Road to the actual turn lane closer to Bertram that we, that's not in the current plan. And so maybe we can add that section into our discussion.
I thought it ended there because that's where the next.
It's close.
How close?
I can't give you a deep.
Half mile?
No, further than that, but still, it's a mile. But anyway, there is a relatively short section that we need to probably see about getting to where it is actually continuous to Bertram.
Well, I want to, I want to speak to that because yesterday I did talk to the area engineer too and showed my concerns because I did measure it. There's been three fatalities within less than a month, I'm pretty sure. And the fact is that neither, neither section has a turn lane in it. Now, I'm not sure exactly what happened at the winery, but, but I know one of those would have been prevented by a turn lane there at, at Bertram, which is basically inside the city limits of Bertram. So, so now that is farther out than the Laney Road to Burnet. So, so needless to say, I don't know if there's any help that the public can do or not. But I tell you what, anybody that's concerned about their family, they should be out there, you know, trying to talk to each and every person they can, legislature, whatever. And furthermore, you better be driving defensive and be looking in your rearview mirror because that's usually where it's coming from right now. So, so I, I applaud anything that Tech Dot can do for us.
Joe said he'd, he'd be happy to come and give us an update on things. I'm not sure it can happen on the next court date with the holidays and things are going on. But that way, we're hearing it, you know, straight from the organization and not, you know, hearsay. So it looks like we have a public comment on this agenda item.
Yes, this is for Mr. Darling or the Commissioners Court. Are there any updates on the European condos out on County Road three forty?
To the best of my knowledge, that project is on the indefinite limit.
Because there's a lot of, a lot of money out there.
There's a lot of money sitting around.
Lot of taxpayer, lot, lot of taxpayer money that, that should be being collected. I don't know who's paying the taxes on it.
Well, it's, if it's infrastructure, it should be on the tax rolls. Ma'am, did you have?
The rates are about this high on all those beautiful European condos that nobody seems to want.
It's a shame, isn't it?
Yeah, well, I mean, I, I, I'm not sure that I would hold that question. My neighbor only had one door, but.
I wouldn't want to be that close to a road if a truck dropped a tire rod, you're going to get one through your window. But anyway, yes, ma'am.
How a water issue, does anyone have insight in what it means that you passed this constitutional amendment that was in a major water project in Texas last year?
You talked about through the Texas Water Development Board?
Yeah, it was money for good water protection. Does anybody know what that is?
You know, part of that, they, they looked into diesel plants and distribution. But a diesel plant, they put a number on it just to get a gallon of water to San Antonio. It's about seven, eight dollars a gallon.
That's, that's the scope of the project.
I'm, I'm not sure the exact scope of the legislative project. I know on a local basis, you've got the city of Georgetown that's buying water from Robertson County. And in Florida, they got a pipeline. It's interesting because they're actually buying water from a Canadian company that bought up the groundwater.
Ocorax?
No, Edco, Edmonton, Canada. The city of Edmonton, Canada, every citizen is a shareholder in the corporation. And they get foresight. And then about a decade ago, they tied up a bunch of East Texas groundwater. So the city of Georgetown is doing that. The trouble with the money and the legislature out there is water sources. You know, they come home and, and see it, everybody talks about the drought, the, the. And the legislature actually reacted to that. And you have a bunch of surface water impalements built. You had Sam River, and you had Lake Ford, Richland Chambers, a number of those that come online through the eighties, nineties, early two thousand. You actually had a Blue Red Fork come online up east of the Metroplex area.
You actually had a Blue Red Fork come on land up east of the metroplex area of Bodak. It just came on land here in the latest years. The trouble with surface water, it, not only you got to have inflows, but, but number two, uh, it'll take about 30 years from inception to completion to get a surface water project, uh, 30 years in the US. We do have a study. Yeah.
All right. Let's try and keep this on track here. All right, so that's, uh, no action on 18, it's just a, a discussion. Uh, 19 is discussion or action concerning budget, interdepartmental line item transfers. And the auditor has provided me with a list of, and it's a different format that I'm used to, so I'm not sure how I need to, uh, read this into the record, quite frankly. Do you have it in front of you? Could, could you assist in this? Do you have a copy of what you gave me?
Yes, do you, do you just want to go over the, I, I don't know how you want me to read it?
We're approving, we're approving some line item transfers.
There are line item transfers, they're all from within departments.
The interdepartmental transfers.
The interdepartmental transfers.
Okay, so it's within an approved budget? So any elected official can pretty much, pretty much use that money for whatever they want to. I'm just not sure with this format, how to read that. It is a part of the record, so, uh, but you had a question or comment?
I have, yeah. Um, normally this would come under the consent agenda, right? Which I notice is not listed in the, uh, agenda today. Has that gone bye-bye?
Um, I think there's an attempt to have it so it's done.
Separately?
Separately and out of my items.
As we've been requesting?
Yeah.
Thank you, I appreciate that. I, I really do. Uh, I do have a comment on it though. Uh, I was, I printed it off yesterday so that I could, uh, try to match up those account numbers with the budget to find out which departments those money, monies were coming from. It's really illegible on the, on the printout.
Well, the main thing is, is that it is definitely money, let's say the county clerk had, just picking on you. So you've got money for operating supplies to buy cartridges or something for printers? Okay. But say you've got another line item that you need to do for some conference travel. That's to say?
Right.
This is moving something within?
Yes, but, but to satisfy my personal.
Okay.
Um, um, curiosity, shall we say, regarding which money, which departments the money's coming out of, I couldn't tell because of the account numbers, when you print this out, you can't, you can't even see what the, which account number, which department it's coming out of.
Well.
You could match that up to the budget, but I wasn't able to do that because I can't read the numbers.
I would say that this, in the auditor's defense, this is a way to try and come up with a more transparent way, if you will, that's what the Boz word.
Yes, and it is very transparent.
So perhaps we can work on a different type of report that will clearly show what, whose budget is doing what.
Right, and, and thank you for doing this.
I, I just can't interpret it, I'm sorry.
Um, ye- yes, this time the scanned copy, the, the print out of the computer system and how our software handles it, puts the account number in like a faded font.
Yes.
And, and that made it very difficult to scan, so maybe we can try scanning it on a darker setting on the printer to try to get the account numbers to become.
That would be wonderful. And I, and I do appreciate you doing this and appending it to the, uh, agenda so that we can see it beforehand. Thank you.
Okay, so is there, um, any questions, comments or motions on agenda item 19?
Move to approve.
Motion second, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. 20, discussion or action authorizing payment of claims previously approved by the county auditor. Is there any questions, comments or motions on that?
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, motion carries. Um, 21, discussion or action regarding any departmental asset transfers. What that generally means is like, say, there's an old sheriff's office wrecked out vehicle that needs to go to salvage or auction, or let's say one precinct has got a piece of equipment that doesn't fit their needs anymore and another precinct might want it or maintenance might want it. So it's a transfer of equipment from one department to another department. So it's usually something going to auction, something going to salvage being just recycled, uh, or trash and, um, or a transfer. I don't believe there's any to be considered on this, correct?
That's correct.
So as I see it, there's no action required on item 21. 22, is acknowledgement receipt, acceptance of reports of county officials as required by local government code. Um, B would be Burnet Central Appraisal District 2023 financial audit, um, and the TCEQ notice that was attached. Uh, that's not an action item, it's just putting to the record. 23.
Oh, I just had a comment on 22.
Okay.
I would just like to, on A, the acceptance of those reports, I'd just like to renew my request that we know those beforehand with, with the sensitive information redacted as we've discussed here in court earlier. Just want to renew my, my request for that. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I hear you. Okay, 23 is discussion or action regarding contracts, agreements or grants to be approved and or ratified. We have a contract, only one's listed is a, um, I'm sorry, contract, an amendment with Vive on, on phones. Jackie, what do we got here?
That was for the South Annex.
It's just for the South Annex? This is putting them on the Vive system?
That already got approved, but there was an additional phone and, and additional WebEx account, so that was removed. It's just an amendment of something that was already approved.
Can you check with the contractor or something that there were some ceiling towels missing, correct?
Two ceiling towels that I've, that I've seen at the South Annex.
We will check with them.
I don't know if they put them somewhere, I need to get maintenance. I, I just thought of it.
Okay.
Is it in the Commissioners Court thing? I just thought of it, so. Um, all right, but we, is that the only contract with, correct?
Yes, sir.
All right, so is there any questions?
Move for approval.
Second, we have a motion, second on 23A, all in agreement, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. 24, discussion or action concerning calling for bids, bid openings, request for proposal qualification of related openings. A would be approval to go out for bids on the courthouse window repair and restoration. Um, just so you know, we tried to find a vendor on the, an approved buy board or purchasing cooperative and we were unsuccessful. Quite, to put this in layman's terms, this courthouse got completely renovated in 2000, the year 2000. I was sitting on the court and we did all that. And anyway, it's the, the window glazing needs to be redone, there are some broken panes that need to be done. Um, and so this is, this is the plan to put that out to bid. Richard provided a, a scope of work, I believe. Is that what you're here to speak to?
Uh, no, sir, I was just going to give updates on the current bids that are out.
Okay, so first of all, um, that's the only thing we need to go out to bid on, correct?
That's correct.
All right, um, so, um, is there any questions, comments or motions on that?
Move for approval.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries and yes ma'am.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners, Megan Schuman from the Auditor's Office. Uh, just going to give updates on the current bids that we have out. Uh, we do have the commissary bid, uh, due tomorrow at 2:00 PM. Um, we also have the, uh, Joppa Bridge RFP, uh, due on December the 18th at 2:00 PM. And then this week I will be, uh, posting the paving washed rock bid and that one will be due on, uh, January the 15th of 2025.
Can you remind me on the Joppa Bridge RFP what the scope of that is?
Uh, just general repairs and removal of the west approach.
Remove the west approach? I thought it ran north, south.
So then the?
Towards the community center, towards the church?
Nope.
The other side.
Towards Burnet.
Towards Burnet.
I thought that was west, but.
Okay.
Anyway, that approach on, on that side, and then they're going to put a, uh, a balcony? They're going to pencil it off. I don't know how to say that.
Uh, remove approximately 40 foot of the approach on the west side of the bridge, construct and install a decorative metal railing to enclose the newly open end of the bridge, railing to be designed and painted to match the historic look of the bridge, and if possible, use boards from the removed approach to repair some of the boards on the east side of the approach.
And so the intent is to make it only accessible from one side?
Correct.
Okay. All right, uh, and insofar as bids we've awarded, uh, on the construction on the building over here, they mobilized and started work on yesterday and the building beside it's doing it as well. So there's a lot of activity on the two buildings on that side, so. All right, thanks for the update.
Thank you.
All right, calendar review.
Judge, I did want to mention the questionnaire on the, um, IT, or the insurance for cybersecurity is due at the end of January and the coverage starts in April.
So we have to have things done by January what?
Um, I was just told the end of January.
Okay, we just need to get wherever she went, she's like, we just need to figure out what all that entails and we don't want to have some unintended consequences, put it that way. Okay, calendar review. So Saturday is the big, uh, is the parade, correct?
Burnet Christmas Festival and parade. And the last weekend of Main Street Bethlehem.
Judge, I know we've mentioned, uh, a couple of items that need to come back on the 19, so if everyone, this Friday at 10 AM, I'd like to make sure that you have, it's a little off on time, but.
Okay. Um, on the 13th, so this Friday at, uh, 2 to 5 is a retirement reception for Glenn Gilmore who's run ISF and, uh, I see something for Johnny Thompson in Meadow Lakes.
December 18th.
Yes, December 18th at 11 AM there in Meadow Lakes. Um, looking ahead, because of moving some dates around, there is a need to do a special meeting in early January. For those of us that still live on a paper calendar, the new tech calendars are here and this is a really big thing for me, I'm pretty excited.
Mustang purple too.
What's that?
Mustang purple.
Yes, it is, yeah, nothing to do with A and M though, but that would have been last year's color. Um, so in looking at the timing of things with billing cycles and, and whatnot, um, and the availability of this room, um, January the 3rd is coming up as an option. We do not have to put this on the agenda because it's a special meeting, it's not moving a regularly scheduled meeting. But again, due to billing cycles, and I would like to keep the agenda focused on that if at all possible, but if there's something that needs, you know, timeline attention, then so be it. But, um, please let me know if January 3rd, we only need three of us, people may have travel plans, I get all that, but, um, if you can let me know. Chad, that could be your first meeting.
It will be. It's almost the next one.
Um, so anyway, uh, stay tuned, might pencil that in. Um, so there's that. Um, any other events coming up that'd like to be showcased here?
Uh, at the last meeting, there was talk about a, somebody from the AG's office coming to do an open meetings, is that still on the 10th of January?
Yes, ma'am, that's the plan. Um, they're going to come and talk to us about, uh, o- open records and how it works and what we can do so we can potentially all learn from it and work together, um, into the future so that we don't, we don't have issues.
Have we cleared, this room should be available, I think it was taken up through the night.
I'll have to check, I'm not sure.
Okay, let's do that. Did you already, do we already have a place scheduled to have that?
No, we're still working on it.
We're still working on the location.
If this room's available, it's appropriate, right?
Absolutely, it would be a great idea and.
Okay, we'll check on availability, we'll get notices out and it'll be posted as a workshop.
Perfect, thank you. So there's open records now?
No, ma'am, it's open records. I, I tried to, to talk to them about open meetings, I didn't get as far as I do with open records, doesn't mean we can't continue trying and we'll see if we can have that also.
What time?
Uh, nine, 9 AM, 9 AM.
Okay, no other items, anybody wants to showcase anything, okay? Well, that's everything on.
Did we skip 16?
Which one?
It's going to be a push to the 19th.
All right, so if there's no other questions, then we will adjourn this meeting at 11:25.
Quick signature.
They're all quick.
Well, you think that curve with the burn ban, it was actually out the, it'll be out the 20th of December.